This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those in your chambers, and if you have anybody online, good evening. Good evening, council. I'd like to call the order, the Hassett City Council, May 1st, 2023, at 7:02 PM. There is a quorum. All members of the council are present in the chambers. Item two is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We bow our heads. Thank you, our holy Father, for your many blessings. We ask for your grace over our city, our state, and our nation, with us in all that we do. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its republic, our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is citizen participation. Does there anybody who would like to address the council on any topic? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the podium, turn on the button down in the middle, and you'll see a red light come on at the mic. There you are. Please state your name and address.
Angela Webb, 612 Bertrand Lane, Hassett. Okay. I wanted to address the accessory building guidelines or ordinance for Hassett, and I wanted to just, I think it's currently at 24 feet, 1,500 square feet, 24 feet high, 1,500 square feet. Apologies, I tried to do some investigation, but the current accessory building ordinance allows for the home that's being built on a half-acre lot behind my house. So there's a 3,400-square-foot home, there is now a pool, and a 1,500-square-foot accessory building. The accessory building has two bedrooms, two baths, a utility room, a fireplace, a kitchen, a dining, a living room. The kitchen does not have a stove, which is the only thing that keeps it from being a home. And I just want to know what we're going to do about the ordinance to change it so that other people aren't dealing with the same thing that I'm dealing with. That's why I'm here to speak at a council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Yes, sir. Laura.
If you please state your name and address.
My name is Laura Slodra. I live at 1195 Wild Center Way. Good evening. I'd like to, I have a few comments and questions in regard to the development-dedicated parkland referenced in the current election ballot. If this vote passes, please consider only selling the portion that NISD needs to complete the school. Question: Were the residents of Caraway properly notified that this parkland was to be dedicated to the city? I'm not sure, since Terra Manna, our HOA company and builder, still promoted this feature to potential home buyers. If this was off the table, then advertising should have been discontinued. Question: Can the parkland portion in the corner of Blue Mountain Road and Intermodal Parkway be reserved for a park adjacent to Caraway? If we aren't supposed to build within the gas well easements, then Caraway is out of land to build a park. Question: If voters agree to allow the city to sell the parkland to NISD, and NISD does buy all of the land, what is going to hold them to building and maintaining a public nature teaching area, as stated in the ballot? These ideas sound good, but they're not binding. In past administrations, there have been too many handshakes or informal agreements without proper documentation. I do not wish to see this happen in the future. My second point of comment about Harmon Road and Hassett Parkway. I'll reserve these comments for later in the agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Anybody online? All right, ma'am. Well, thank you, and I will, let's go on to item number four. Items of community interest. Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, is last day of early voting. Hassett's main polling location is the Legacy Learning Center at 501 Schoolhouse Road. Please visit hassett.org to view other locations. They voted any Tarrant County polling location during early voting. Saturday, May 6th, 2023, is Election Day. Hassett's main polling location is again the Legacy Learning Center at 501 Schoolhouse Road, and all this information in county polling places can be found on hassett.org. Saturday, May 13th, 2023, is brush drop-off day. Please note, only trees and brush cuttings and vegetative materials will be taken. Fault paper shredding services will be available. This event will be conducted on the city-owned property behind the fire station. Otherwise, we know where the ballfields are. That's it. Users are limited to the city of Hassett residents. You'll need to present a water bill and an ID to confirm residency and whether it be at the entry point. You'll visit hassett.org. You'll find more information as well. Wednesday, May 17th, the regular city council meeting, including canvassing of the May 6th, 2023 general and special election returns. Wednesday, May 29th, 2023, is Memorial Day celebration at the Hassett Community Park and Veterans Memorial Garden. Also, Wednesday, May 29th, all city offices will be closed in the observance of Memorial Day, and the Hassett Public Library will also be closed Saturday, May 7th, 2023. Hassett is hiring. If you know anybody that enjoys working outside, landscape-type work, or not landscape, but water maintenance, it can be a fulfilling career for any young man, young woman. We have a water maintenance worker one and water maintenance worker two. Those are entry levels, one being the most entry level and two goes step above. Please refer to us. You go to hassett.org and find out more about it. All right, council, let's go to item five, consent agenda. We have the April 17th regular city council meeting minutes.
Mr. Hosen?
Yes, I move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Motion is made to accept the consent agenda as written. Is there a second?
I second that.
There is a second. It is further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Item number six, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and action items. Six A's, discuss, consider, and act on ordinance amending the Hassett Code of Ordinances by amending section 3.02.006, extension of expiration time to modify the process by which requests for an extension to construction code permits are evaluated and provided for an effective date. Mr. Thetford?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Council. Essentially, what this is, is a request to modify the ordinance that talks about permit extensions. Right now, we, two of the major permits that we have are construction permits, building code permits, and preliminary plat. So this section is dealing with section 3.02.006. So the extension, the existing ordinance defines extension or expiration time requests for both permits, talks within that section. Subdivision ordinance already, section two already specifically addresses preliminary plats, expiration, and extensions, and is not part of this change. Construction code permits uniquely are different from preliminary plats, or permits. The revising section 3.02.006 specifically addresses construction code permits allows for the application for an extension request specifically to construction code permit. So what this is allowing us to do is to bring a request for an extension to the city council. I would put this on the agenda for you to approve this. Right now, the only, only way for an extension for a permit, as it currently sits in our ordinance right now, is it requires the party to request the extension at the time of the permit. So there is no avenue for a layman to request a permit extension. So, extension for the expiration time for a construction code permit provided in section 3.02.005 may be requested anytime, must be in writing, and stating a specific length for the extension, and be based on either the size of, the size or other unusual requirements for construction or plan design of the project, or other circumstances causing delays. Must be noted that difficulties in financing will not be considered for basis for the extension. When a request for an extension is submitted with a complete application, like I said, I will submit this to the council for your public hearing and deliberation on that, on that item. And you shall, the council may extend the permit's expiration time in accordance with the request. You may modify the expiration time in, as a reasonable period as determined by city council, or may deny the request. The decision of the city council is final. Do you have any questions?
I've got a question. You said the extension won't be allowed if it's for financial reasons?
Correct.
What is a reason that they would fall on extension date that we would allow?
Do you have any? I believe, you know, maybe it is taking longer, maybe it's material delays, shortages, et cetera, those type of things. The law and finances know if a project is undertaken, and you should determine whether you can afford it or not, and those finances arrange prior to that. Financial decisions are not taken in consideration, I mean, with regard to Hassett, I don't think ever, and any other city as well. It's not unusual not to take financial matters under discussion. But this, I support this, and this separates the two. We're trying to address the construction code permit, a same time with preliminary plats, those are permits as well, technically. Well, section two of the subdivision ordinance already addresses uniquely preliminary plaque permits, and this is melding the two together. So this is really separating it out, addressing the code, construction code permit topic.
I have one question. This will, once it's voted on, it'll move forward. Anybody that is already currently in the process won't be affected. Is that correct?
That's correct. What do you mean, won't be?
Like that with grandfathered in, if they're already, if they've already started the process, it'll be new permit from this point?
It'll be affecting.
Abandoning permits, anybody who has an active permit or who will be requesting a permit can now ask for an extension to their current permit time, assuming that this gets approved tonight.
But previously, they had to file that when they, when they filed for the permit?
Correct. So this is simply giving council broader discretion to grant an extension request at any time during that the permit is active. Previously, it had to be requested at the time that the permit was first received and requested.
If someone has one that they requested beginning, theirs is still good. It's just now they have the opportunity to request they have.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hosen, this question is, this is basically just them, someone requesting the permit. It's not going to determine anything. Once we get the permit, our response time back, the city's response time back, do that permit?
Correct. I mean, it'll be placed on the agenda as soon as possible for the council to address. But it's the council's decision whether to grant, modify, or disapprove. Normally, there's like a 30-day that we would actually have to, have to respond to any type of permit to the city?
I didn't hear a question.
Normally, is there like a 30-day that we would have to respond to any type of permit that's been requested?
I don't know. We need.
There's a 45-day turnaround on a permit application.
Permit application.
On an original application. There is no bearing like such as you making maybe a preliminary plats. There's a time limit to respond on that, for sure. But there is no time limit to respond on a permit application, other than we have it in our ordinance, that application will be responded to by 45 days.
Okay. So my question is, is if they ask for an extension, that clock starts based upon their extension date to Friday?
Correct. Okay.
That's what I.
Because right now, our permits right now are good for 18 months. If we have this in place, if someone's nearing the end of their permit and over construction, and they know that they're going to need some more time, they're going to particularly ask me, make applications to my, my office, and I'll place this on the agenda for the council to hear and look at the circumstances and make a decision.
Just one, one question on this extension. Are we going to limit the number of extensions they can request on this? The council can. You take that into consideration when they come to you.
Yes.
They ask for an extension, and then they get close in with that, and are they going to just keep, you know, domino in effect, extensions and drag this thing out?
The ordinance doesn't address that. So that, again, like the mayor said, that would be up to your discretion if they were to come back for a second or third time. But the ordinance does not create any prohibitions on how many times they can request an extension.
There would be records kept in the iWorks. Is it iWorks? iWorks system? Or what? Okay, was this the first? Is this the second? Is there a third? And you would be notified with that in your agenda cover sheet. It gives you the maximum flexibility.
Mayor Hosen?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
A motion to accept amending the Hassett Code of Ordinances 3.02.006, extension of expiration time to modify the process by which requests for extension to be, to construction code permits are evaluated and provided. Motion is made to approve, or amending section 3.02.006, extension of expiration time to modify the process by which requests for an extension to construction code permits are evaluated and provided for an effective date. Is there a second?
Mayor Hosen, I second.
There is a second. Further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Six B, discuss, consider, and act on making the intersection of Hassett Parkway and Harmon Road a four-way stop intersection. We'll have a presentation. I do recall there's a speaker who would like to speak on this issue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have two now.
Okay. All right. Oh, that's me. I'm the presenter. Okay. All right. If you would pull up a map, well, let me go ahead and do the analysis there. Let's take that back to the cover sheet. Okay, there's been, and in here, I made an error. I said May 24th in May. I'm not predicting anything. It should have been April. It's April 24th, 2027. Please forgive me. Two accidents reported. There is an expectation of drivers on Harmon Road that the intersection is going to be a four-way stop. It is not. The intersection is a two-way stop on Harmon Road, with Hassett Parkway as a traffic being a fast through. I'll say, well, there is ample warning on Harmon Road. The traffic is required to stop, but, you know, we're out here in the country. We think we are. And, and people don't. But there is, I'll say that the police and public works and the fire department all agree, and I as well, making this a four-way stop. If you would go to the map, or first, let's go to, there's a picture with a transformer. Now, we do know there's a siding issue. You pull up to the stop sign. I'm at Harmon Road right here, looking to the west, and I'm trying to, I'm looking at this, this traffic coming. Well, no, I don't know. I can't see if there is a vehicle between that semi truck and that transformer. And these folks are coming by 35 miles an hour, and I'm going to shoot the gap and boom, I'm kissing a semi truck. It is difficult. We can, we can stop, well, if people will obey the stop sign, we can stop with. So, and it sounds like I'm beating hard on that, but it's a reality out here. Just few people will honor the signage, the speed limit, stop signs, and things of that nature. But, you know, we're getting bigger, and people will just have to. Nonetheless, if we can go to the map, there we are. Okay, in the bottom center, four-way stop consideration. This is the intersection we're speaking of. I asked Fire Marshal, Stephen Harvey, our audio video rapper here, that's his part-time job. Thanks, student, to go monitor that intersection. He sat out there. I want you to go ahead and tell him. Go ahead and tell him with Stephen what you saw.
In 30 minutes, six people ran the stop sign coming from the North Head and South off of Harmon Road.
In 30 minutes? So, there's stop signs, there's a big red flasher, there's a sign that says, you know, I think the sign says stop ahead. What else can you do? Maybe speed bumps. I don't know. But, yes, it would help if we made that a four-way stop. Ultimately, the intersection needs traffic signals, and we, there is a project coming that may bring just that. Part is their requirement to construct their project is to signalize that intersection. That would be a good thing. And, but before you nail council, is consideration, discuss consider, making this a four-way stop?
Mayor Hosen?
Yes.
I just have a concern of the traffic flowing eastbound. Will it start to back up, you know, quite a bit where it's on both sides? I will see there's a four-way stop that's going to stop all the traffic that's, you know, going eastbound to get on 35. I don't know if it's going to cause it to back up too far back, and then you have more traffic frustration.
I don't know that. We don't have a current traffic count, but we wouldn't be able to determine anything from that anyway. This is a brand-new road open, and that use is growing day by day by day. What I do know, if it were to start backing up, that would probably, I'm quite sure, in Texas, Texas camps and governments to build those flyovers, a whole lot sooner, a flyover would be from I-35 and 170. There would be a bridge all over everything out there. And it would direct connect into Intermodal Parkway. It would bypass any trucking, I won't say any trucking, but majority of all the trucking actually traveling on Hassett Parkway itself and going to Intermodal. That's where the hood is in Intermodal. But these flyovers from I-35 and 170 would give them a direct route without getting over the roadways as well. And if they saw that occurring, this is too big of an economic engine for the state of Texas for them not to address that sooner than later. I would say this, if they saw, I think they would be kind, they would acclimate themselves to this like any other driver does. They'll understand this is where they stop. When the lights come, they'll understand there's traffic lights. They deal with it already on, from 170 going over the I-35 overpass, just a set of lights. So, not even a quarter of a mile away, I don't think it's going to hurt anything. And those lights can be timed and adjusted to work in concert with each other to help minimize that. They have that capability.
With that said, you know, if it's going to cost $3,000 to put these signs, stop signs, two, two questions, I guess. Can we put temporary stop signs four-way until they build a light? Or do you know how soon they would build these traffic lights?
Oh, the lights might be a year out or more. So I suggest we put in permanent signs now. Otherwise, what we do is have, we have problems, you know, they'll go over, and we're talking about the, we must put structure with sandbags on it. It looks temporary, they think it's temporary, and oh, I can go ahead and run it. I think, you know, for the little money that it is, let's go ahead and put in, well, that's in the strut too, but nonetheless, it's in print, is that we, we put in on all four corners, permanent stop sign. And then in a year or so, should that project keep on, you know, if that comes to fruition, which is for everybody right now, it gets signalized, we can remove them. And they'll go back into the poles, and the signs would all go back in our inventory or would not be wasted.
I, I agree with the council member Nahara, the concern of using Hassett Parkway as a pass-through, but then, then putting the four-way signs. I'm full of being a single light. My question is, I, I drove it, but I, but I don't remember if I saw. Is there a sign that says cross-traffic does not stop?
When you approach the stop sign?
There is.
There is a sign right there. It's yellow. Mr. Harvey?
While I was sitting there, the majority of the people running the signs, or stop signs, they would get impatient. I'm waiting on the car in front of them, and when the car in front of them go, they would just stay on their tail and keep running. So they, they were at a complete stop, but then they didn't want to wait for their turn.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So, those accidents that occurred, they're coming probably from people working in the warehouse, maybe, in a hurry to get home, in that direction. So, when is that Harmon Road access going to be closed?
The, that we have.
Because that would limit the traffic coming through there.
That is in the coming weeks. That will limit, that would limit the southbound traffic going. Now, I believe this most recent April 27 accident involved an 18-wheeler and an automobile, in which the 18-wheeler was, I believe, was eastbound, and the automobile took off from the stop sign, and it might be because of the power box.
Right. That was my next question.
And they hit the rear set of wheels on that semi truck.
I, I've been on this road several times. I use it quite often, and I feel I have to pull up into the intersection a little bit so I can see around it. to pull up into the intersection a little bit so I can see around it. So, it's a big obstruction. Is there anything that can be done about that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Rogers submitted last week to Tri-County with a picture of that obstruction and the visual obstruction that it has, and said, uh, told him that we need to start working on a plan to leave that, uh, transformer.
Okay, and, and I just have one statement I wanna make. I would like, in the future, the council to address again the speed limit on Hazlet Parkway.
Understood, understood. That might be a viable kind of, uh, that could be incorporated in the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna go back to, on the council meeting on April third, these voted to extend three thousand dollars to shut Southbound Harmon Road down. So, I wanna know exactly, uh, uh, Mr. Tucker, was it here? When, when are we gonna close that down? Because these accidents, I mean, we're saying everybody's coming southbound, and I come that way almost every day. Reason you gain more traffic cutting through there is when the construction on thirty-five shuts down, thirty-five drops down.
Again, we are, Councilman Moore, we're depending on the supplier, with the barricades and all the signs.
We don't have any extra barricade.
Not for that. No, we don't. Now, I have some material, um, we don't, we just do not. We don't carry that kind of excess. Now, what excess we have sitting over here by Mr. Reese, pardon me, Steve, those barriers, but we have nothing been put in place today. Um, now, I am sure if, uh, the council were to authorize this, uh, I would venture to say we could have it within, uh, two weeks or less. These are not exotic pieces of, uh, equipment, uh, road, you know, barriers to keep these, um, tidbits locked, keep promised.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you don't need anything more than what on Hazlet Parkway pass Intermodal that's blocking the road there. That's basically the Star Horse type of road dock, and you just need one sign that says road closed.
We're not closing the road. Please understand that. There are, uh, there are transportation criteria, uh, transportation code, code criteria with regard to blocking the road. All we're doing is blocking the access.
Great. Now, Stephen, can you back up to the map, please?
And I, yeah, I'm very concerned.
This is the same, this is the same map that we looked at back before. Can you fill it up? Because we talked specifically, it says, you know, Hazlet, you know, Westport to be, you know, closed.
It says, it says Harmon Road access, the two-way disaccess point.
Yeah.
The two-way disaccess. The road is still open, will still be open, but the only way you can access that road, uh, go on that road is from Hazlet Parkway. You can enter from the south. We have to keep the road open for the park along the south hill, but we can block that access point.
At Westport.
At Westport.
So that's what we talked about before, was that was, that intersection is a poorly-designed intersection, and you can't see the eastbound traffic on Westport.
Correct.
So, that shuts down the people going south on Harmon Road.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm referring to, is, let's get that shut off. They can still access Harmon going north.
I think that's an independent conversation. Certainly gonna help. Absolutely is gonna help. I think that's also independent, this being a four-way stop. That's a different topic. Let us say this, if you're concerned about halting up traffic, let's say that we put up the four-way stop, and then you saw a semi truck and other vehicles or traffic backing up at the intersection and backing up all the way to I-35, maybe we're gonna have to do something else.
Yes, and that, that can be addressed then. Um, my main concern is the safety.
Yes.
And we have Caraway subdivision right here, and their safety, they're going in and out of there, children, um, you know, going back and forth for school, um, I don't wanna s- I mean, every time I go there, I hold my breath when I turn the corner, you know, when I'm turning south, you know, I go, okay, nobody's coming, I hope I press the gas fast enough. It just makes me really nervous. I've always been for a four-way stop there, and I feel like it needs it for the safety of our citizens. I do think once Harmon Road access from Westport, uh, that's closed, that will eliminate that southbound and help a little bit, but we still got this traffic coming east and west at high rates of speed, and it needs to stop for Harmon Road. There's a lot of traffic on Harmon Road.
I, uh, I truly, to address your concern, you know, from here, about a stack of, they can time those lights, they do it all the time, allow a certain amount of traffic through. In fact, the technology is such today, is those lights can change their timing on their own, cause of programming, and the thing is, they've actually gone to laser systems now to detect the presence and how deep the backup is.
I'm good on, I'm good on the light. The lights aren't an issue with, I guess it's, it's that connection of, of the access of Harmon being closed does contribute to the traffic, um...
It does, but the south, there is southbound. Let me say, we got Caraway people out here? Are you comfortable pulling up to that intersection from the south and looking past that thing? Because the reason is, you gotta pull out into the intersection to see if anybody's coming. I've had the police, I have deputies, both sergeant and deputies, like me and tell me, this is not good, 'cause you gotta pull out into the intersection to see if there's any uncommon traffic. Now, I don't think we won't wait until that transformer gets moved. That's months. That's many months. And so what, I, we saw a semi truck down for three minutes. Okay, get over it. Well, I say, it's a whole lot more, uh, you know what? If it was one of us that wrapped up underneath a semi truck wheel, then, uh, we'd think a little different about it. So I think that is really the topic here. That's really the topic. It's not a, you know, the expense is minor, and it would certainly help career safety. So I, I, I would urge you to do this, council, and I'll stop there. You know, the further discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing. I'm actually for this, but I think we, like we said, we can also readdress things at different times too. So if the transformer does get moved, and we're seeing that traffic's being backed all the way back up to Intermodal Parkway?
Yes.
We can readdress things at that time, but we do have to think about the safety at this.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we, we put it in place now, once the transformer's moved, and if traffic is backing up, and we still don't have a traffic light that we can look at it in.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. All right, uh, unless there's any more discussion, I would entertain a motion, please.
Two citizens wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there someone who would like to speak?
Laura Slatteroff, I live at one-one-nine-five Wild St. Away. Um, you pretty much have addressed, um, my concerns, um, to please make this intersection safe, safer. Um, we have shown you the, the picture of the transformer, the electrical utility box, and during peak times, I've often considered turning right and then making the necessary turnaround around thirty-five somewhere, I haven't figured out where, um, to come back towards Hazlet, and this adds to my driving time, trying to get to Hazlet between five-thirty and six o'clock on Thursday nights. Um, are there parameters, as I've come to know, ordinances that, um, have to be followed to place these boxes a certain distance from the road out of driver's sight line? That's a question I have. Is it possible to move the box? And we've discussed that, um, to allow for adequate driver visibility? Just in case there is a driver coming east who doesn't stop at that stop sign, we would be able to see that driver coming and not pull out. So that is another reason for moving the transformer box. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Yes, there, Winella Reed.
Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, council, is there any further discussion? I have a motion.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, put at the intersection of Hazlet Parkway and Harmon Road, a four-way stop intersection.
Very good. There's a motion to make, uh, uh, Hazlet Parkway and Harmon Road a four-way stop intersection. I ask that you would amend your motion to include...
To include three thousand dollars.
To also, uh, yes, that, as well as the, um, update the signage, stop signage ordinance as well, that allows us to put this in the books.
Okay, uh, let me make another vote.
Just say, I amend my...
Okay, I amend my motion to include the three thousand dollars taken from the contingency fund to pay for the four-way stop and, uh, to update our signage ordinance to include this.
Very good. So, motion's made to, uh, make Hazlet Parkway and Harmon Road a four-way stop, authorizing three thousand dollars expenditure, uh, from the contingency line item, and also updating their signage ordinance to, uh, incorporate this additional science. Just a second.
A second.
There's a second, to further discussion. All in favor? But you net, no, it's not. Four zero, all opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. All right. Item six is, uh, Caraway Neighborhood Park update. This is purely an update, there is no action item here, council. This is a recap, uh, uh, Friday, March tenth, at a, uh, Caraway, um, Neighborhood Mayor meeting, uh, this was brought to my attention, that being that a neighborhood park sided in the Plan Development Ordinance, zero-one-eight dash twenty-sixteen, was, uh, missing, it had not been built. Uh, I told them, uh, residents, that I would check into this. I did. Uh, we had, uh, three documents, governing documents, that is the, uh, Plan Development Ordinance, and just to refresh you, a Plan Development, uh, generally, it almost always changes the zoning ordinance, and it has to be approved, the Plan Development, by ordinance to establish that Plan, that Plan Development. That's why we call it a Plan Development Ordinance. And this one was zero-six, or zero-one-eight dash twenty-sixteen. And we had also two subsequent, uh, community facility agreements, both Phase One and Phase Two. So, uh, Thursday, April thirteenth, was my first phone call with conversation of the developer, Mr. Pettigo. Uh, in that conversation, I urged Mr. Pettigo to forward the city any documents that he had in possession concerning the neighborhood park. And I stated this could save time for all of us if he would forward those documents and possibly bring a resolution to this issue. To this date, the city has not received any documents or communication from Mr. Pettigo on that particular conversation. Tuesday, eight days later, April twenty-fifth, Mr. Jeremy Page, our attorney, and I had a, uh, video conference meeting with Mr. Pettigo, uh, concerning the Caraway Neighborhood Park. Uh, on that call, I did inform Mr. Pettigo that the city had three documents in its possession that were governing documents over this Plan Development, that being the PD Ordinance zero-one-eight dash twenty-sixteen, also executed September sixth, twenty-sixteen, and the, uh, CFA Phase Two, Phase One rather, executed September nineteenth, twenty-seventeen, and CFA Phase Two, uh, executed, uh, April nineteenth, twenty-nineteen. I also informed Mr. Pettigo that the PD Ordinance required the developer to construct a neighborhood park at developer cost. As it read, it's the ordinance as it reads. Uh, Mr. Pettigo disagreed with the developer requirement to construct the neighborhood park citing other agreements. In turn, I urged Mr. Pettigo to produce any documents revising the terms of the PD or from the city to this effect. To date, the city has not received any documentation, documentation or communication from developer Mr. Pettigo. Is there anything, Mr. Page, you wanna add to that?
Yes, um, I, I, going through the Plan Development Ordinance, like the mayor indicated, so our, the PD Ordinance is an ordinance that is approved by the city council governing, uh, the, the development on this piece of property. And so it is the minimum development requirement that have been mutually agreed to by and between the city and the developer. Um, it was adopted back in twenty-sixteen, um, and a few relevant provisions to our conversations tonight about the neighborhood park. Um, first off, is, uh, the minimum open space requirement did require the developer to dedicate at least twenty-one acres as parkland. As part of the Phase Two final plat for Caraway, the developer did dedicate about twenty-four acres to the city as parkland. Those, uh, that parkland is up for, uh, possible conveyance to the school district, assuming that the vote is approved on Saturday. So when that was dedicated to the city, uh, via plat, the city accepted it, and now it's the city owns it as public parkland, and we cannot do anything with it. We cannot convey it to anybody else, including the school district, without a vote. And so I know that was a question that we had earlier tonight. And so, um, the language on that ballot, just to clarify, is binding, and so we cannot do anything beyond the scope of what the ballot, uh, wordage says. So, for example, it requires a nature center, requires, um, a couple of other things. Those are all things that will be a part of any sort of negotiation with the school district, which has not begun yet. And so that's just, um, kind of part of that. So, but the, my point being, we cannot simply give this land back to the HOA or to the developer because it is currently city parkland and state law prohibits us from doing that. Um, the other relevant part of the PD Ordinance was the requirement for the developer to construct both an amenity center, which had to be at least one point five acres, as well as a neighborhood park, which had to be at least one acre. Both amenities are and were to be maintained by the HOA, um, and, and so, as a part of the Phase One final plat, the developer had dedicated approximately ten acres for open space, and that open space was separate and apart from the twenty-four acres that was dedicated as parkland to the city. Um, when you look at the PD Ordinance, the original site plan, which is a little bit different than the, what, how everything got arranged in the plat, um, separated out the HOA park and the amenity center from the rest of the parkland. Those are two separate areas identified originally by the developer. And so, with all that being said, um, the only way that any provision of the PD Ordinance could be amended would have to be in writing and would have to be approved, uh, at two public hearings, first by P and Z and then at city council. Because it is a zoning ordinance, any amendment could not just be made between the mayor or by me, it would have to be by the full approval at the, of council at a public hearing. And, um, as the mayor indicated, we have no record, obviously, of any vote of the council, but even in any sort of communications by the city, either the staff or elected officials or any of our commissioners, indicating that the city would be constructing the park or that any other language that would be changed from what has been approved for this.
I would like to also state, it was verified that the city has never collected any park fees. They never have, and would you, now, it's an interesting thing, we have two documents... They never have, and would you, now, it's an interesting thing, we have two documents. One document, the PD document, the Plan Development document, ordinance, requires this, in addition, you know, to, to the open space of the neighborhood park and the amenity center, it also requires this dedication of parkland. It doesn't say anything about park fees. When you go to the CFA, it doesn't say anything about dedicating land. It says, oh, you're going to pay park fees on top of that, in addition to. So, when you sum the two together, the two contracts, uh, the developer was, you know, agreeing to both. And Mr. Page has a theory on that, of which I agree, but go ahead.
So, when we're looking at the terms of the PD ordinance, both parties have essentially complied with the terms of it, except for the construction of a neighborhood park. The developer dedicated the twenty plus acres of parkland, uh, dedicated about ten acres for open space, constructed the amenity center on the open space, um, and, um, and no park fees were ever collected by the city. And so, when you're looking at the CFA asking for those park fees, that could have just been language that had been left in from a previous agreement that the city perhaps just didn't catch, and that would be the reason why, um, no park fees were collected. Typically, developers have to either dedicate parkland or pay fees, it's not both. And so, considering that this developer did dedicate quite a bit of parkland to the city, it's probably why no park fees were collected. But again, this is all conjecture because we don't have any other written agreement, uh, for this. Um, but I, we do know that parkland was dedicated, it is ours, it is subject to an election on Saturday, and that no fees were collected.
We do have Mr. Thetford here, he can attest to this. Mr. Thetford, come up.
That's my question, Mayor Halsey. They get the option to donate parkland or pay the fees.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in this, in this instant, they donated over twenty acres of park.
They agreed to both.
And the ten acres, so over thirty acres, but no park fees.
No, not over thirty, they donated parkland and twenty-four point one acres.
Twenty-four point one, what's the ten acres you're referring to?
The ten acres is open space, and so open space is separate from parkland. So, parkland is for the public use, while open space is for HOA private use.
So, there's a private use park, is what with the neighborhood park that we're speaking of. Um, uh, speaking with Mr. Thetford, Mr. Thetford runs permitting and other services as well, he's the head of the department, but he was the, issued permits back then as well. And, uh, I asked, I checked with Mr. Thetford to check all his records, did you collect any park fees? And they went back, they checked and go back, they had not. And I said, do you recall why you did not collect any park fees? And Mr. Thetford responded...
Uh, essentially, at the time Caraway came in, I was informed by the, uh, city engineer at that point that we would not be collecting those fees, and saying due to the fact that they, uh, they did dedicate the parkland.
Very good. So, just to clarify that point.
That's, that's how the...
And that supports, Mr. Page is just independent theory of, you know, they probably realize they made a mistake.
I've got a question.
But it still doesn't negate, the developer owes a neighborhood park to fulfill this ordinance, and also to the residents.
Yeah, so the PD ordinance specifically separates out the amenities, which was the one-acre neighborhood park and the one-and-a-half-acre, um, amenity center, and that is separate and apart from the parkland dedication. And so, I think, again, that's just really important to point out, the difference between the private amenity open space versus the public parkland dedication, both of which were required by the Plan Development Ordinance.
Council, you got any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, Mayor Halsey. So, and maybe you can't answer this, do we know if the developer collected park fees from the residents?
That answer would be no.
Would have any way of checking it?
That'd be no.
They did not? Okay, all right. And so, the next question is then, uh, were there restrictions or when was this one-acre park supposed to be developed in a Caraway?
It was supposed to have been, well, the ninetieth permit, we have, you have issued all permits in Caraway, which is three hundred and two? Is that correct?
Three hundred and twelve.
Three hundred and twelve.
Yes.
When would you estimate that you issued the ninetieth permit? How far back?
Well, I mean...
An educated estimate?
Um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, somewhere around there.
Okay, some, so somewhere in there. It also states in this ordinance, when the ninetieth permit is issued, the developer will come and pull the permit to build this neighborhood park. It's very explicit in the ordinance. That has not happened. So, it's what, two to three years late?
And did he say why he didn't...
Well, he just contested that he wasn't responsible to build it.
But it's in the ordinance that he signed?
He believed that the city had, had an, in some verbal agreement to construct the park on his behalf. And there's no record of that.
Okay, okay. Can you read what is in the ordinance or the PD that he signed? And the date that he signed it? And then I would like to know what recourse does the city have to enforce it?
So, let me, I'll go ahead and read. So, section fourteen, so this is section, uh, D fourteen, it says a neighborhood park, and, uh, these are the requirements for it. It says a neighborhood park site, a minimum of one acre in area shall be identified on any clearing plat of the residential component. The neighborhood park site shall be final platted, and permits for the construction of the neighborhood park shall be obtained from the city when a final plat or plats for a total of ninety residential lots have been approved by the city council. The neighborhood park shall be maintained by the HOA. The shade, shade structure slash pavilion shall be constructed of either metal or natural wood. Vertical column slash support shall be constructed of metal or wood, and may include stone or brick enhanced basis. Shade structure slash pavilion roofing material shall consist of slate, slate shingle, metal or composition shingles consisting of earth tone colors. And the neighborhood park shall, at a minimum, consist of five hundred square foot shade structure slash pavilion, playground, open play area with benches, and a trail.
So, has all of that taken place, everything except the one-acre neighborhood park?
The amenity center...
The amenity center has been built, but the park has not been built.
Right, and what was the date that he signed, the developer signed that?
Uh, what?
Okay, the, the council approved that ordinance?
Yes, on September sixth, twenty six.
Twenty six.
That was the full execution date. Any other question?
I had to say, what recourse? So, vi, so this is a zoning ordinance, and so violations of the zoning ordinance is subject to enforcement action from the city, beginning with citations. And so, under the, they could be subject to up to a two thousand dollar fine, uh, per violation per day. And so, uh, we could issue daily citations until they, um, remedy it, and potentially, uh, uh, enforcement action could eventually escalate to, uh, litigation as well, to enforce the ordinance.
What was Mr. Pettigo's reaction? Did you, uh, did you tell him this, this is an action of the recourse that we had with him, or against him?
No, we didn't cite that. He has this ordinance, he knows full well what's in the ordinance.
So, I guess at the end of the discussion, he still does not want to build this, or he says that he does not have to?
Uh, he is convinced that his emails and phone calls, uh, has relieved him of responsibility of that. But again, uh, when, uh, Mr. Page and I spoke with him, we urged him, please produce something, anything, and neither of us have received anything. I'm giving, I want to give him, uh, you know, full opportunity to produce any document that would, you know, cause, council, you, um, you know, if there's something that we believe that may have, uh, changed something for some reason, that would be brought to you. But as it stands, it's just in violation of our ordinance, and, uh, we would need to proceed from there.
You know, I, I would like to give the developer the benefit of the doubt, that he wants to be in good standing and to bring us something. So, should we, as we proceed, request those documents in a certain time manner before we proceed with going through any kind of, um, citations?
Yeah, that, that would be certainly an option. Um, and that would really be up to you all, to Director Mayor, how you wish, uh, we to proceed with this.
I, Mayor Halsey, I suggest we make him aware that he needs to present the documents that he states it, you know, the proof that he does not have to build this. If he doesn't come up with anything, then let him know that we're going to take action as far as, with a deadline, and he, and the fees will start ticking on us.
So, we'll craft a letter, and, uh, I'll have, uh, Mr. Page review it for me, and send that letter to the, to the developer.
The other thing, if he misled the residents, that they were going to get a park, and then he does not produce, is there anything there that maybe the residents can provide where he is basically false advertisement? Here's a part that I promised him that he...
You know, that would be certainly probably a civil matter of sorts, and we're not going there. I think we have all that we need. We have all that we need. We got a contract, and we're just looking, please fulfill the contract. That's all we're asking.
I had a question. Um, the neighborhood park that hasn't been, um, completed, have the trails, this is a minimum of two miles of trails can be constructed, shall be constructed, have those been completed?
Mr. Swinkie can probably answer that. I know he's reviewed a lot of it.
The trail shall comprise a continuous six-foot wide, four-foot inch thick. Um, the trail system shall be maintained by the HOA.
A portion of the trails have been made, I don't know the exact, uh, length or footage that's been constructed at this point.
Not, not sure if it's a full two miles.
No, but we will find out.
Well, that concludes my presentation, Council.
I, I had one more question, since I wasn't at, at a last meeting for, for work. It says financial impact is none, so they'll be moving forward, they'll be, will there be a cost to the city or the citizens for, for any of this?
Well, the engagement of our attorney on this, but I can't, I don't know what that is, right now.
Right, okay. So, that's, at this point, that's all, is just attorney?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that concludes my update. Um, I need to find my...
Excuse me, ma'am?
Who's talking?
I do have a speaker that has signed up for this.
Oh, please, okay.
One Ella Reed, uh, twelve thirteen Marigold Lane. Um, I'm here, uh, thank you for getting this item on the agenda, um, at the last council meeting. Um, and I appreciate the discussion. Uh, I do have, um, some paper trail from Mr. Pettigo. So, I am the one HOA board member for Caraway. And so, he did provide me with some emails, um, between him and, I believe, Mr. Atanasio, the last city engineer. Um, so I do have those, which I will read a portion of it, I don't know how much of it, again, it's an email, but, um, the mayor and city council members have been, and this is dated July first, twenty twenty. The mayor and city council members have been discussing the strategic plan. One item discussed was the development of the parkland adjacent to the Caraway subdivision, which will be dedicated to the city. The council members wish to know if a joint participation project could be achieved to save money on the park trail development. I think this would be mutually beneficial to the Caraway residents and the city. I have attached a schematic developed by the city engineer. Thanks for your attention. And that was from Jim. And that was this document, the Caraway Nature Trail, with a viewing area, a pavilion, two bridges, a concrete drive, so that is from Mr. Pettigo, um, as well as an old document that I could not open. Um, but, also going back, so, and there is more in this email trail, if you guys would like to take a look.
I would, I would urge you to urge Mr. Pettigo to turn that exactly into the city, that's how we'll accept it.
Okay. And speaking of the long-range plan, um, which, I believe this was a long-range plan adopted September twenty first, twenty twenty, um, we see under quality of life, parks and facilities, Caraway Nature Trail, viewing area, trail, and benches. And that is a line item on that long-range strategic plan. So, it was obviously up for discussion, um, between the previous mayor and council. Um, and from what I was told by the developers, there were some sort of grants with the, the land being dedicated to the city. So, I see on here, um, a seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar project total from the general fund. I don't know if grants have been accepted by the city for that land, but that was what was told to me. Um, so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I will encourage Mr. Pettigo to forward these to you, because he was, um, willing to forward it to me, so.
Very good. The only way we can accept is from Mr. Pettigo.
Okay. And I did want to, um, say, sorry, I have a lot of paperwork in front of me. Um, again, the Caraway homeowners were sold the park in some capacity, believing if it was supposed to be from the city or developer, I guess that's what we're all trying to find out. Um, but there are multiple documents that show that the park was intended to be developed by the city under the previous leadership and council, and just referring to those documents. Um, we want to give the current city leadership an opportunity to do right by the residents of Caraway. From my understanding, NISB only needs a portion of the land, two to three acres. Is there a way that we can still make this a win-win for NISB as well as the city of Hazlet? Um, and I, you already confirmed that park fees were not collected. Um, and my question was about the CFAs, because it does say on there that the park would be maintained by the city of Hazlet, and park fees will be collected, which was different from the original ordinance, which we addressed, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, how do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the Car, the residents of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody online?
One.
All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, Council, let's take a, a, uh, ten-minute recess and, and reconvene in the, uh, boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight ten PM, or, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you. And in ten minutes, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers?
No one else has signed up.
Anybody in line? Okay, very good. All right, that, uh, I would like to, item seven is executive session. Uh, council, let's take a, a ten-minute recess and reconvene in the boardroom for executive session. Like at, uh, eight, 10 p.m., okay, or, uh, recess the open session. And in, uh, ten minutes, uh, which should be eight twenty, let's reconvene in the boardroom. Thank you.
How do we rectify this issue and make things right? Uh, from my understanding, the builder has requested that the land be beaded back to Caraway, and I guess you said that's not possible, so, um, as well as to propose to build a park adjacent to Caraway. Who will be responsible for funding this project if the park fees were not collected? And we ask that you please consider doing right by the resident of our beautiful Caraway community. We love being a part of this Hazlet community, and we think that having a park on the east side of Hazlet will be a great asset to the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.